To start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You see me? Comment Smith, will you call the role, please?
Mr. Burton.
Here.
Mr. Dennison.
Here.
Ms. LaClaw.
Here.
Ms. Minio.
Here.
Ms. Snowden.
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting, the minutes from the November 18th, 2019 Board of Education meeting?
Sum of two seconds.
Any revisions, changes, comments about the minutes from November 18th, 2019 Board minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor of approval of the November 18th, 2019 Board minutes say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. We now have some special recognition. Dr. Miller.
Thank you. So, we are very excited to once again welcome our state qualifying cross-country runners. I don't, I'm trying to think of how many years in a row this is now. For, thank you, Mr. Acton, appreciate that. If our students would stand, that'd be great, so you can be recognized. We have Miles Feinkoff, Riley Barno, Alexandra Grishop, Hannah Hayden, Lily Keller, Claire McDonald, Carly Place, and Maria Steinkie. And our coaches, Eric Acton, Jeff Landis, Matthew Cravalo.
Cavalo.
I was gonna say it wrong, I apologize. Reagan Detwiler and Tom Alois. And if, I don't know if any of the coaches want to say anything, but we want to congratulate you. It is a, it is quite an accomplishment to make it to state-level competition. And our runners have just been outstanding over the last few years. So, we want to thank you and honor you for your hard work and your accomplishments, but mainly for your hard work. Because as my son, who was a cross-country runner, used to say, what we do for our sport is what other people do for, you know, punishment in other sports, so to speak. So, you run and you run, I love it. It's a two-mile warm-up, a three-mile run, a two-mile cooldown. So, you put a lot of effort in and we really appreciate it. And, Mr. Acton, you want to say a few words?
Yeah, I want to thank you for honoring this team again. I just, it's no small feat. And these, these kids have consistently worked hard. But they work just as hard outside of athletics. You've got kids here that are in theater, in band, in orchestra, in other sports, right? And they work very hard. One of the things that we talked about at the beginning of the season this year is that hard work beats talent when talent doesn't work hard. And they know they're talented, but they know they have to work hard. That doesn't come. And they start June 1st, and it's over five months later. So, most of the year, they're focused on this, this sport, these events. So, that kind of commitment and dedication. And I want to say just a few things. Miles has been with us four years. He's been in the state league three years, okay? And he's in the orchestra as well, all right? So, he balances a lot of things. And he's very talented and creative with his art and his movie-making. And is, has been a real true leader for our team this year as a senior. And so, I want to make sure that that doesn't go unnoticed. It's an amazing run. This is about four years. And as far as our freshmen, Lily and Riley, and here up front, just, you could watch them improve all year long. Their hard work and dedication really help get our team, and it's because of our leadership here. So, I have another four, four very talented juniors. And, and, and as you know, they don't know anything different than getting to the state league. And so, it amazes me. And I've never been around so much talent, okay? And I've never been around a, a more talented coaching staff. But I want you to note too, like, these upper-class men, girls, all sophomore, all, all Ohio academic. And that's, you couldn't qualify as a freshman, but I think that should be noted. And both teams won in SNL this year. And Claire was the medalist for the ladies. I could go on and on. I just want you to know that it's a big deal. And it's what brings me back every year, and our coaches back, I love. So, Coach Detwiler ran for us. It was a student here at High Achieving. Coach Calister, same thing. In our program, High Achieving. Coach Alois, same thing. And like I always say, we got campus. Thank you very much.
Let me thank our coaches again too, because we do have very talented students, but it does take adults and leadership to bring it all together. And I appreciate, I know we all appreciate the work that our coaches put into mentoring and developing our athletes and our students. So, thank you and congratulations again to all of our students.
And we actually, it's not on our agenda. We actually have just a short, just one more special recognition. If I may, I'm going to come to the podium. And then after this, then everybody that easily can leave, I want to do. There's a couple of our board members that are still asking me today. Ms. LaClaw, Mr. Dennison. And wait, we can all talk in our report reports, but I wanted to make sure that that it'd be a special point of recognizing the both of them. First of all, Mike, on behalf of our schools and our community, I want to thank you for your eight years of service. I know you were elected in 2011 when your boys who are both here, who are both little guys. And, and I know, I'm sure that they're proud of you as they've come up through the schools to, to watch you as their dad have input in their education and things that were important to this district and I'm sure important to them. So, and, and how they and their friends are educated. So, we appreciate everything that you've done, the passion that you clearly have shown for the education of our students, and for your time and the effort that you put into being a board member. So, I wanted to thank you again for being, on behalf of the school, district, and community for, for your last eight years of service. And Ms. LaClaw, again, our community and our schools thank you. We owe you a debt of gratitude as well. Again, you ran in 2011, were elected. And you had no kids in the system at the time, and, and, which shows a lot for what you care about this district. Now, you spent eight years of your life scheduling around your retirement and your travel and grandbabies and making the, your work on the board priority. And that doesn't go unrecognized. It speaks volumes to your dedication to the district and your passion as well to look out for the students in the district, even though you no longer have children attending Vexley Schools. And lastly, on a personal note, I became president after you were. And I appreciate all the mentoring and it didn't go unnoticed for me being able to draw from your experience. And it helped me immensely. So, thank you again on behalf of the district and our community for your service as well. We have a little token of appreciation as well. Put the vote for you. Ms. Snowden.
You're welcome. So, that you can open. This is a paper that will, well, it isn't a paper. It's a certificate of a paper that will be put at the BEF, in Alumni Parkway by BEF when they start to get a scratch. Is that for you? No, you guys, you're welcome.
And thank you for the BEF. Make sure that you always consider giving the BEF. They were generous enough to provide these, these papers at very low cost for us. So, in appreciation, in appreciation for Mr. Dennison and Ms. LaClaw for their service. So, again, I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, eight years and it's a lot of work. And you guys see them at the meetings and you see us at meetings, but there are a lot, there's a lot of time spent behind the scenes, going to other meetings, going to events, preparing, reading the agenda. And I'm sure Mr. Dennison and Ms. LaClaw can attest to that and all attest for them that their hard work doesn't go unnoticed. So, thank you.
Everybody would like to say, "Thank you from the board." Thank you very much.
So now, if anyone out, excuse me, anyone would like to leave now then?
We understand.
All right, great. Thank you. We are now moving on to executive reports. And Dr. Miller.
Oh, thank you. As always, I'll start with items that are not on the agenda first. I also would like to express my thanks to both Mrs. LaClaw and Mr. Dennison for your service. Having you have been part of the board when I was hired, and I really appreciated the opportunity to go through that process with you and then the time that I've been able to spend with you over the last two and a half years. I think you both are very dedicated and passionate about helping our students to have the very best education. And it's absolutely been a pleasure to serve with you. So, thank you very much. Moving on, I had, we've been talking about needs in the district and potential future staffing that we may need in order to meet the needs of our students and to provide the support that our staff members deserve. And throughout the, there's been a process to do this throughout the levy campaign. Certainly in the opportunity to interact with people in the community, different ideas and input about potential needs were shared by community members and parent groups. We've also, I've had lots of conversations with our administrative team. I've had some conversations with some of our BEA leaders as well over the course of the last few months. And so, we've, we've talked a lot about what, what are the needs that we have. Jill Abraham, our Chief Academic Officer, Leeson Smith, our Director of Student Community Engagement, and I have had multiple meetings with leadership from Nationwide Children's Hospital in the area of mental health and needs that we have there. And we know that we need to look at grant possibilities. If we have any additional staffing, there needs to be funding. That is, we need to be conservative in any funding of positions that we have. So, we've also looked at any possible reallocation of funds, as well as, as I said, grant money. And the process has been a multiple feedback loop, I will say, with the administrative team. I've met with individual principals. I've asked for their thoughts. They talk with teachers. They give teacher perspective. Mrs. Abraham has also had conversations as well. As an executive leadership team, I think we've revisited this topic at least four or five times. And the reason I'm taking such a long view and a long process is that while we are very, very grateful for our community for the passage of the levy, we know that we did not generate a surplus of funds. And so, any staffing changes cannot negatively impact the five-year forecast that Mr. Smith presented last month and that you voted to approve. And so, we wanted to, we're being extremely conservative and extremely thoughtful and moving very, very slowly before I make any recommendations to you. In addition to not impacting, negatively impacting the five-year forecast, any staffing changes also have to have maximum impact at the district level. So, every dollar spent has to have a maximum impact across the district and not just in one small area. So, with that, I can talk to you about a few areas that I expect that I will bring to you in January. I will not bring a formal recommendation of anything until January, because again, we're still in this, this conversation mode of study. I'll think we're really close and then we'll think of something different. One area is middle school assistant principal. We have had Brooke Smith serving as the administrative intern for the last two years. She has done a phenomenal job. But she is on leave from her regular teaching assignment. And per our negotiated agreement, a teacher can be on leave from that assignment for two years. And so, this is the end of the two years. What we believe is the need for assistance at the middle school at a leadership level is absolutely, has absolutely been demonstrated. Mrs. Smith has really taken on a, a, a position of support for, for staff and, as well as managerial and operational type work. And so, we, we believe that we will definitely need to continue to have somebody in that role, but it cannot continue to be a teacher, or it cannot be the current teacher. It could be a different teacher. But right now, I am leaning and with the input of the administrative team, leaning toward more of an assistant principal as opposed to an intern. That gives us a 260-day contract as opposed to the 186-day teacher contract plus 10 that we have. So, it would give us additional time and potentially have that person take on some additional responsibilities with middle school athletics. I've said many times to each of you, we are a small school staffed by the small athletic department, but we run a large school district athletic department. And so, we, we know that's an area where we may need some additional type of support. The other area that I expect I will bring forth is in the area of special education. As mental health needs have increased and the need to continue to support our teaching staff with the ever-changing needs of students, I believe that that's an area where we need additional support. As you know, I've talked with many of you over the last two and a half years about that area. But again, wanting to be thoughtful, moving conservatively through that process. But I do believe that, that we will, I will likely come forth with that in January. But again, I want to continue to get some additional input from members of our, our staff before I move forward with that. Some other solutions have, have not been fully explored. And I don't want to, to talk about anything else that's really just ideas at this point, so we're not ready for that. But I will have some proposals in January. I will tell you, most of what we're looking at is, is areas of need, again, in, in mental health, behavior support, special education. Those are the areas that we're, we're feeling the stress, as well as other school districts. This is not unique to Vexley. It is a regular topic of conversation among superintendents and I know among chief academic officers. And we are very fortunate to have the Director of Student Community Engagement in Ms. Smith. And a number of other school districts have added similar positions because the needs continue to grow. So, I appreciate your patience with us as a, as a team, as we take our time to formulate a really good and strong proposal. So, I expect to come forth with that in January. On the agenda, there are a couple of items I wanted to point out. We have two extended field trips. Latin, Latin class and Latin club are requesting a trip to Italy in the spring of 2021. That's more than a year from now. I would like to go on this trip. I want to really commend Ms. Lund. She is our new Latin teacher. She has put together a comprehensive plan for this trip, including fundraisers, to make sure that any student who wants to go would have ample opportunity to participate in fundraisers. She, she not only put together a plan, she put together an entire binder of a plan. And so, it's been very impressive how thoughtful she has been in planning this. And so, that trip is on. And again, it's for spring break of 2021. So, more than a year from now, you have lots of students who want to participate, an opportunity and to support the inclusion of students. So, again, I also want to publicly thank Ms. Lund for being so thoughtful and forward-thinking. And then also the basketball team. And I point this out because one of our commitments to our families, when the athletic fees were raised, it would be that no additional funds would be requested from athletes. And so, Coach Phillips has presented a plan that does not cost any additional money to the players on the team. So, that is on there as well. And then also, I will apologize for this. There were three policies that were on for first reading in October, graduation requirements, and some suspension and expulsion language. Those should have been on for a second reading in November. And if you recall, we had a large number of policies in November, so it was simply an oversight to, to not put those on the agenda. We did not receive any additional feedback on any of those. Also, all the changes in those policy are in law, and so there really isn't much debate anyway, because they're legal changes. But I wanted to point out that you are seeing those because we did not get them on the November agenda. So, that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yeah, first I'd like to thank Mr. Dennison and Ms. LaClaw for their service and for bringing me on to Vexley or being part of that group that did. You've treated, treated me with the utmost of respect professionally and also on a personal level, which you don't find too much, but I, I do appreciate it from the bottom of my, my heart. I look forward to our next phase of a friendship and maybe a little less professional, but I look forward to that as well. November's relatively a quiet month in finances. So, what you will see on the agenda for the treasurer financials is an update on how we budget, or how our budget looks. Before November, we were comparing ourselves to the April forecast. Now that we have an updated forecast, our budget variances are going to be tied to the November forecast. So, you won't see any variances in some of the revenue line items, and we've updated those. You'll see variances in expenditures, because a lot of the things that are forecasted are kind of smoothed out or averaged out for the remainder of the year. One line I would point out is a variance from last year is the transfers in line 5401. Last month, you'll recall, we approved transfers of $100,000 to food service, $25,000 to our PI fund, which is dedicated towards the football field. And that's less than last year, because we no longer transfer to athletics because of the increase in athletic fees, which is again, helping general fund and putting more dollars towards a broader spectrum of students and services than just athletics. But other than that, nothing too significant to, to report. December should be a relatively quiet month as well. November and December are really low revenue months for us as a district. So, we're kind of in that spending of our surplus these two months until we get revenue again in January for more tax collections.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. For my board reports, I, this is from Ms. LaClaw and Mr. Dennison. I just echo what I said at the stand, at the, at the podium. I, I think as board members, we recognize the hard work and dedication that you both have put in over the last eight years. And me for one, it doesn't go unnoticed, because I know how much time you both put into it and how much effort and, and, and passion into it. So, I wanted to again echo what I said at the podium. As far as my board report, I have two quick ones. One is from the Treasurer Finance Committee. Ms. LaClaw and Mr. Smith and I and Ms. Miller, we just went over the levy results, talked about, as Dr. Miller pointed out, the, the appreciation that we have for the, the public. But we are, we know that this didn't provide a surplus, but we are going to be very smart with our money as we continue to do over the last number of years and continue to be smart with that as we move forward. And also keeping the Financial Advisory Council intact, which is a great help, our public and our community and other members of the community that come and when we meet and talk about how we move forward and get the input from the community, that is always helpful as, as we put together our financial plans moving forward. As far as Athletic Board, I was planning on attending something, came up at the last minute, but Dr. Williams was kind enough to provide me with the minutes from that. A couple of things that were discussed at that, there was discussion about the coaches handbook and the parent-student-athlete handbook and making sure that the language is in there correct. And talking about concession stand support and implementing that and, and, and having our parents being helpful in, in volunteering or quasi-volunteering for concession stand, how making sure that everyone participates because of the boosters contributing $40,000 to our athletic department. So, and a lot of those funds are raised through concession stand. Also, talked about, there was a discussion about the middle school cheerleading and stunting. There's been some discussion about permitting our middle schoolers to do that. I think there's going to be some information. There was information provided at that, at the, the last meeting, but also at the next meeting. My understanding is that we plan on having a discussion and perhaps a, a vote on whether or not there's going to be a recommendation to the board. Am I correct on that? Whether or not the policy, our board policy permits, or, or that the Athletic Board will be recommending or not if middle school cheerleaders will be permitted for stunting. But that's an Athletic Board discussion that will be had. I think our next meeting is January? February? Okay, February. Also, one other thing is further discussion about senior night and the expectations of senior night and putting in the coaches and the student-athlete handbooks about what senior night is meant to be. It's to acknowledge and honor the seniors, and it's not about seniors getting extra playing time. It's all, it's still a competition, but certainly that's a, that's something that I think is important for our student-athletes and our parents and our coaches to know. So, those are three main topics that were covered at the Athletic Board meeting. Ms. Snowden.
Thank you. So, I will first just report on BEF. They had a board meeting this last Wednesday. And the highlights are that the inaugural issue of the Vexley High School Alumni Magazine was printed and mailed. So, if you want copies of that, you can ask Pam. They also received a, the BEF received a grant from AP's foundation for almost $50,000 to purchase new furnishing, new furnishing sets, tables, chairs, desks, and modular seating for the high school library, which is great. The, the, a board approved that meeting, $30,000 in classroom grants. And there's still a pending grant request of $58,000 for new lighting system and the Shunstein and Cassingham Theater. So, they're kind of, they're still working to explore potential funding partners for that. So, we can forward that in the future. And then finally, the BEF is providing funding and support for a community-wide presentation by a psychologist and author, Chris Willard, tomorrow night, 6:30 to 8, in Cassingham Elementary Theater. Dr. Willard teaches at Harvard Medical School and is the author of Child's Mind, Growing Up Mindful and Raising Resilience. So, you can forward that tomorrow if you would like. So, that's a BEF report. And then my only other thing was that I did want to say a few words about our, our, the board members, because it makes me sad to see them go. So, Melissa, I will miss Melissa's input on all things, but especially the financial intricacies of the work we do. I always had complete confidence that if Melissa had reviewed the numbers, which she always did, they were right. Melissa is a board member with great diligence and diligence and resolve. When she engaged in a topic, she did so at 110%. As our resident math person, she will tell me that this is not possible, 110%, but as the software side of the analysis person, I can tell you it is. Her tireless work has led to many improvements in this district, and I want to thank her for her willingness to do the hard work every day for the last eight years. And Mr. Dennison, I will miss Mike's intelligence and insight. Mike is deeply committed to our community as a tireless advocate, tireless and vocal advocate for students and parents. I believe I've become a better board member because of Mike. I could always count on him to bring up different or varying perspectives and points of view, which is so essential in a board of five elected to represent an entire city's interests and aspirations. He made me expand my thinking, and I so appreciate his thoughtful deliberation and dedication to the work we've done together on this board. So, I will miss you both.
Thank you. Mr. Dennison?
Yes. Thank you for the kind words, by the way, from my friend thus far. Thank you. I can't believe tonight is my last meeting. So, being on this board has been one of the toughest, yet most rewarding things I've done in my life so far. As such, I would ask for the board's indulgence, since I deliver a slightly longer than usual report as a reflect on my eight years of service. As all of you at this table know, running for office requires putting yourself out there and making yourself vulnerable. I'm not going to lie, losing an election stings. Losing this election stung. But one of the many things I've learned over the last month is how much that sting can be seen by a simple gesture of goodwill. When someone reaches out to express sympathy, not even with the outcome, but just with what you're going for. What I've also learned is that making a simple gesture is incredibly hard for some people to. So, thank you to those of you who did. When I think back to why I wanted to run for the school board in the first place, I remember seeing a good district that was a bit aimless, lacking a strategic direction, a sense of where it was going and what it wanted to be, as education was dramatically changing around it. I'm incredibly grateful then. I was able to serve during a time of change and transition for the district as we hired a new treasurer, hired a new superintendent, and developed and implemented a new strategic plan. I leave the board feeling that the district does now have a clear direction, and I'm proud of the role I've played in. of the role I've played in settling and setting that course forward. One of the lesser known components of our strategic plan was the development of our core values: improvement, inclusiveness, investment, individuality, innovation, inquiry and integrity. These are the values that we as a district say we want our students to carry forward when they leave our schools. As the only Bexley graduate on the board during my tenure, I've always taken my role as a representative of our alumni and our students seriously. And while these values were written well after I started on the board, I do think they reflect much of what I learned when I attended Bexley High School and I have helped and certainly shaped my work. Improvement. All of my work at the board has been guided by a belief in continuous improvement. The idea that we are a great district in many ways, but that our students and community deserve our ongoing efforts to both improve the things we're good at and to acknowledge the areas where we struggle and address them. Inclusiveness. Of everything I've done on the board, I'm perhaps most proud of leading the effort to create our gender identity and gender expression policy that ensures Bexley students, that Bexley schools are a safe and inclusive place for our transgender and gender non-conforming students. Another hallmark of my service has been a continual push for the board and the district to be more transparent and include the community more intentionally in our decision-making. I'm proud that we now make our meetings available online and have a robust social media presence by still worrying that too much of our communication is about pushing our story out rather than inviting our community in. Investment. Unlike, unlike Melissa, someone say, no one would mistake me for a numbers guy, but I am proud of the strategic financial commitments our board has made over the last eight years. Investments in social and emotional learning, in mental health services, in the arts and staff development. While additional spending is surely likely, I believe that the investments we've made over the last eight years will pay off in the years to come. Individuality. I've long held that Bexley is simply too small and too resourceful to not deliver on the Bexley promise of each and every one of our students. While I'm proud of the work we did do, I regret that in the last eight years, our board was not able to fully address the achievement gap and other issues facing our students of color, including disproportionate punishment and a lack of faculty representation. Similarly, while we have made improvements, I regret that we're not able to fully address the needs of our special education students and their families. I know the current and future board members are committed to these issues and I look forward to seeing the work they do in the coming months and years. Our community has frankly been too patient for too long with a lack of progress. Innovation. I've always thought our district had the educational capital to spend, that because we're a good district with great staff, involved parents and resilient students, we could take risks and do things that other districts couldn't afford to do. From standardized grading to project-based learning and our most recent investment in experiential learning, I'm proud of the steps we've taken in this direction and I hope we continue to make real and meaningful risks and encourage our students to do the same while teaching them the value of failure. Inquiry. I've never been afraid of asking questions on the board, though I'm sure many of my fellow board members wish I would have asked a few more. At times, these questions have been tough and even pointed, but they're always asked in the spirit of inquiry, of trying to figure out the why of what we are doing and to understand how those choices are going to impact our families and students. I believe we have a great staff full of experts who can understand that these tough questions were never meant to undermine or embarrass, but to challenge and to ensure that our schools are serving our community and that the board's decisions are thorough, thoughtful and purposeful. Integrity. Integrity is everything to me. It has led me times to be hard-headed and stubborn. It has led me times to not be a team player. For instance, I am proud that I remain neutral in the election two years ago. As board members, our community expects us to be able to work with whoever gets elected. And I worry that a board that seems overly interested in choosing its own members will eventually undermine our community's trust that we are here to serve them and not each other. I feel that over the last eight years, I've demonstrated our district's core values thoroughly in my board service, which is why, even to this day, I've always taken, been taken aback by the hostility often directed at me by members of this board over the years. I'm not perfect and I have made mistakes and occasionally been overzealous in my approach, but I've always been respectful, taken responsibility for my actions and nothing I've done has ever been personally directed at a fellow board member. In contrast, my character, my intentions and even my family have been maligned by current and past members of this board. Other members, while not directly involved, have stood by and allowed us to happen without meaningful consequence. On some level, it might feel good to call out this behavior more explicitly, the whos and the whats. I've suffered silently for several years with this treatment and certainly feel entitled to share it publicly. Tonight is neither the time nor the place. I finally concluded that I don't want my legacy such as it is to be defined by this. At the end of the day, it's not the point. It's not what I'm really concerned about. What I've realized is that to truly embody our core values, at least as I've tried to do in my board tenure, required on some level that I be a pain in the ass, that I be annoying, that you keep asking tough questions, that you don't settle. On some level, I understand why my fellow board members and administrative team would be annoyed by that. I've at times made their lives and their work harder. That's still no excuse for the way I've been treated, the ways in which I've been excluded from opportunities that I've served, but on some level, I do understand. When I tried to leave these values in the best way I knew how to, I was often told to be quiet, to get along, told that loyalty to this board and the administration was more important than these values. But ultimately, this isn't about me. I worry that this is also the message we are sending our kids. These core values were meant for them. I'm worried that we use these values as window dressing to feel good about ourselves, to ensure that we're saying the right things and preaching the right things, but that what in reality we want from our students is compliance. We say we want our students to be innovative. Do we actually want them to push for change? We say we want our students to be inquisitive, but how do we treat them when they speak out and attempt to hold adults around them accountable? We say we want our students to be individuals, but what do we do when they venture beyond the narrow path we've set for them? I worry that a district that can't trust its high school students to go to the bathroom during class isn't really interested in having its students live these values. I worry that a community that celebrates an edict banning cell phones without first asking our students how they would have solved the problem of addictive technology isn't really interested in empowering students to think for themselves. I worry the values we proclaim and the messages we send are in conflict, that we've become a district and a community that says one thing, but in many subtle ways communicates something much different. As a proud graduate of Bexley High School, I would like to see our students embody these values. If that means they have to be pains in our ass to make change, to create a new and better world than the one we've given them, then so be it. We say we want to engage, equip and empower students. If that's true, then let's really empower them. At the end of the day, that's all I ever wanted to do on the school board and maybe this wasn't the place to do it. It wasn't about the board and it wasn't about the administration. It was about empowering students. It was about giving them the skills, the opportunities and most importantly, the trust to make change in the world. And I hope in some small way, my service is done now.
Ms. LaClaw.
I did attend the treasurer finance committee meeting with Mr. Barnum, but he did such a good job of explaining what we did. No need for me to add anything to that. I also would like to make a statement after such a long time of service and it's always nice to have your spay, I guess, at the end because I can't fire you. First of all, I would certainly like to congratulate Alicia Mitchell and Victoria Powers for winning the two open seats on the board in this past election. Your qualifications will add such value to this board as we continue to implement the Bexley blueprint and develop plans for the future. This board is in great hands as you join my esteemed colleagues already serving on the board and I wish you the very best. To my fellow board members, we have seen such change during the last eight years we have served. Despite the high academic performance of our district, it was our collective determination to improve our excellent school district by acknowledging the challenges we face that makes me the most proud of us. It is always easier to maintain the status quo, but that's not, that was not to be the legacy of this board. We clearly understood we could do better and that required courage to question established practices and with due diligence, make necessary changes. Some decisions were more difficult than others, but we made them knowing they were in the best interest of our students. The actions of this board have provided new leadership, new and updated policies and new guidelines that keep each student at the center of all the decisions we make, whether academic, financial, facility-wise or any other decision we make. This common goal is a mandate from this board and like no other board before us, we have a clear path and vision to execute our mission. It is important to remember that seeking improvement does not diminish what we already know we do well. Instead, our self-awareness that problems do exist and not being afraid to own them is what makes us stronger. It is this open dialogue that results in understanding and, that results in understanding and positive results. I know each of you are dedicated to our district and will continue to provide the governance needed to continue building on this strong educational foundation with an inclusive culture that we feel and know is the right thing to do instead of just talking about it. I cannot leave without expressing my deepest appreciation for all the hard work Kim Miller and Kyle Smith have done in response to our board's mandate for the changes we hired them to make. The community elected us to keep our schools effective and excellent. We knew these could not be just words or a dream. Both of you took bold action and with fearless leadership utilizing your professional experience and determination resulted in an exceptional outlook for our schools. I know it has not been easy, but it has been worth it. This journey together has helped me be a better board member and understand my role as a board member. I apologize for all those late night and early morning emails I have sent you over the years with random thoughts and ideas that stream through my mind about future possibilities that can often be classified as way out of the box and even comic relief over your morning coffee. You have a team of committed board members that know when you have the right people, the right leadership, the right plan and the right community, anything is possible. Eight years ago, I could not have imagined this day would come, as it seemed so far away at that time. But here I am at my last board meeting with my very last report. My heart is heavy as I will miss all of you. I will miss the tremendous responsibility I felt in just my simple vote. I will miss the research and constant need for more information to cast that vote. I value the work we did as a board and the impact it has had on our children. There is no greater good than serving the community that embraced me and my family over 30 years ago, when we moved to Bexley without a single friend and not even knowing what a Buckeye was. Both those were quickly remedied, however, with the overwhelming welcome and friendship we received from the Bexley community. I owe the people of Bexley more than I can express tonight and I thank you for your trust in electing me for two terms. I am honored and humbled by your support. To every resident, parent, student, administrator, teacher and staff member, join the ride we're on. Don't miss being a part of something special as the district transforms itself so each student can find their own success for today and tomorrow. After all, that's why we're all here.
Ms. Minio, keep a follow there.
I'll be brief.
For the last time, you have to follow me.
I'll be brief. As far as the board reports go, I'd like to just kind of put a plug in to thank Dr. Williams and Mr. Eichenberry for November 25th, the state of the school safety. Was that the title of the event? I thought it was very, I thought it was very informational and I'm really glad that I attended and I hope everyone who attended also walked away with good information. It was awesome. As far as my final words, I want to thank you both. So, Mr. Dennison and Ms. LaClaw, I think I'll start like as a parent by saying thank you for the difference that you made in my children's education. I have, my son is in fifth grade at Montrose this year and I will have been, this is our last year at Montrose, but we've been there since 2009. And when I look at, when you look at the experience from when I started at Montrose in 2009 to today, that experience is different. I can, that's the benefit of having like the gap between your kids, like, you know, you can see, you can see the changes and you can see the growth and you can see the impact. So I thank you both for that as a parent. As a board member, thank you both. Also, I think you both like have given me direction and mentorship and an opportunity in each of your areas of like strength to like talk about, I think, I think that it's important, I guess here's what I want to say. I think it's important when you're coming, when you're making a big decision, it's important to like think it through and like hear opposing points of view or confirm, confirming points of view so that you kind of like know what you were thinking or you can kind of know what you're thinking is what you're thinking. And so I appreciate, I appreciate the contributions that you both made to me like personally as a board member. So I thank you as a parent and as a board member for your service. Yeah. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Allison.
Okay. I was in here last month, I was very, very sick. So I have a few things I want to touch on first. Again, I want to thank Mr. Dennison and Ms. LaClaw for being so friendly to me as I am obviously new this year and you guys were both so nice to me and so welcoming and I really appreciate that as it can be kind of intimidating up here. So first thing I want to say is we had charity month last month for charity newsies along with Clash of the Classes. And actually, Shawty's here right now, but I was going to thank her anyway. She raised so much money for charity newsies with her class and she really motivates students to donate and it means a lot to student council because she does it on her own and it's not even a student council sanctioned thing, so. So does DKO, so thank you to Shawty and Dr. King Owen for helping raise money. We also did a raffle and we raised money through Clash of the Classes and we did the flash cash. So we raised, I think, over $3,000 for charity newsies, so it was pretty successful, I'd say. And then homecoming went well. I know that was a while ago, but I wasn't here, but homecoming went well. We had record-breaking attendance, so it was a really good homecoming for us. And December's kind of a slow month for us. We don't, we pick back up in January, so we're done with meetings for this year. We're just having students focus on exams and stuff and get ready for like winter break. And I think that would be it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, do we have any public comment?
No comments.
No. Okay. Thank you. Moving on in our agenda, we are moving to item six, which is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items six A through G?
Second.
Discussion, questions?
Yeah, so I just wanted to thank Mr. Smith and Dr. Miller for their work in the, oh, am I on the right spot? I'm reading supplemental. But the supplemental that I'm talking about is in, is in the MOU, where is that? Is that?
Resolution.
Resolution. All right, then I'll talk about it more slowly. I'll thank you for your work on this too, but I'll speak on the rest.
Okay. No problem. Any other discussion on items six A through G? Or is it G?
No. A through D.
Oh, I'm looking at the wrong, I'm so sorry. A through, I'm on the wrong month.
Oh.
I have a paper, I have a paper. Six A through D, not G, so let's clear it up. Do we have a motion to approve six A through D?
Are we not approving E?
E.
That's E's the vote.
Gotcha.
So moved. Second.
Okay, sorry. Any further discussion on A through D?
No.
Since personnel, Mr. Smith, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. LaClaw.
Yes.
Mr. Dennison.
Yes.
Ms. Snowden.
Yes.
Mr. Barnum.
Yes. And we're now working on seven, the business consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve items seven A through D, please? Do we have any questions, comments about seven A through D?
No.
I did have, I think there was, you addressed this earlier, Dr. Miller, on the, on the basketball trip. There's a, is there a fundraiser? Is that something that, since, like you said, we're, since we raised our fees, there's no additional fees that appears, is that correct?
Yes, I asked Coach Phillips about this so that I could share that if anyone had questions and he said, indicated that in the past when they collected the optional team fees, there was actually some surplus of those still remaining in their account. And so we, they've also made an ask of the boosters to assist if they're able. And so what he's assured me is the individual players will not be asked to contribute any additional funds in line with what we stated we would do.
Okay. All right. And nobody will be excluded?
No, it's excluded.
Everyone?
Absolutely.
That's, I just wanted to make sure that.
And I just wanted to express my appreciation again for the, for the Italy trip that they have been so diligent and working to put that together for our students. I'm always thrilled with those opportunities, so I really appreciate our teachers coming forward and doing that kind of work.
My son is disappointed that you switched from Latin to French.
It may, I think it should be open, be interested. I actually went on one of those trips last with the old Latin teacher and they're, they're amazing, so I highly recommend.
Just to clarify on the, and I know it sort of says this, but just for public reasons, I don't know if Mr. Eichenberry wants to speak too. How old was the air handler that we were replacing? It sounds like it was at the end of its life.
Very much standard of its life. Best estimate I can get from Mr. San Antonio is somewhere in the seventies.
Not seven years old, but like built and like.
Correct. Installed in, yeah. So you either do Run the Brake or you do the more modern Ashray standard. I'm happy to, with Dr. Velocan on board, we will run Ashray standard, which will give us ROI on our utilities, so definitely needed. We gused it, we tweaked it, we've done work for the last three, four, five years, so.
This is definitely known, this was an emergency, this was something you knew about that was going to happen at some point in the next.
Correct. Perfect world, we would have done it two years ago. The tornado gave it a little love a few years ago and so we've hit the wall with it.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions about items seven A through D? Hearing none. All those in favor of seven A through D, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Thank you. And items eight, item eight, I'm going to do just A and B first because under C, we have to actually have, I think I have to, I don't think there's a vote, I think I just appoint. There has to be a motion to appoint somebody to run the January sixth meeting. So let's just do eight A through B, eight A and B. All those in favor of item, do I have a motion to approve items eight A and B?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion about items A?
All right, here's where I want to pitch you up in. So, we spent a lot of time, and I know Ms. LaQua was very interested in this over the years, in working, looking at ways to work and modernize and bring into better budget constraints our supplementals. And so, I want to thank Dr. Miller and Mr. Smith for their work on this and our entire staff, our BDA staff have worked diligently on it. And I think it's a great expression of a way to go forward. So there's still a little work to be done, but it's all in here and I really appreciate Mr. Smith taking the time to go through all these pages with me. I think, you know, the things that I like about it are that it's, wait, sorry, a couple minutes, sorry, let me do this. That we are, we're, I think it makes it make more sense for a district financially and it's more responsible with our funds to pull out some of the stipends that, what Mr. Smith termed, and I thought was a good point, do more of the adult work, not the work with children, but give, this would give flat amounts for the same work. So if you have a teacher who's been doing this job for, who's been on the job for one year or for twenty years, if they're doing these academic stipend jobs, they'll be paid the same amount, which I think is fair. So, I was glad to see that go into effect and I appreciate, yeah, the work that's been done on that and I look forward to, I know we have a couple more things that will hopefully decide in the quarter, so I'll look forward to that as well.
Yeah, it's a lot of work and then the BDA and Dr. Miller and Mr. Smith put in a lot of work, I think Dr. Williams and Mr. Goldberg as well.
It's no small task.
I second that.
For filling in.
Any other questions about items eight A or B? All those in favor of items eight A and B, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Under eight C, I believe that we have to have a motion to approve, to appoint a president pro tempore. I think I said that right. I looked it up on Google to pronounce it.
That's the last.
Tempore.
I knew it.
Temporay, by the way.
So do I have a motion to approve, I guess to, I think I just.
I think, I, don't I get to make a motion?
Yeah, somebody has to make a motion.
I make a motion to appoint John Barner as our.
Go ahead, say it.
As our president pro tempore for the January, organizational meeting at six o'clock on January sixth.
Second?
Yeah, I think that's what we do. Kyle, do you know, I think that's what we do, right?
Yeah.
A point and a second. All right. Is there any other nominations pro tempore? All right, great. All those in favor of permitting me to be president pro tempore on January sixth, 2020 board meeting, say aye. Aye. As opposed? All right, great. I think I handled that correctly. And just so the public is aware, on January sixth is our organizational meeting and then that's when everyone is appointed and nominations for president and vice president take place. But we need somebody to run the meeting before that takes place, so. Item nine, any other matters that may properly come before the board? And we do have executive session tonight with no vote afterward, so I need to read the high revised code requirement. Whereas a public board of education may hold an executive session only after a majority of the quorum of the board determines by a roll call vote to hold such a session and only at regular or special meeting for the sole purpose of the consideration any of the following matters. This is A, this is A two employment, is what we will be discussing. So therefore, it is resolved that the Board of Education of Bexley City Schools District by a majority of the quorum present at this meeting hereby declare its intention of holding executive session for items two A above. Do I have a motion to approve going into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Since this is, we have, it's a roll call vote, so all, Mr. Smith, can you call the roll for going to executive session?
Ms. LaQua?
Yes.
Ms. Minio?
Yes.
Mr. Dennison?
Yes.
Ms. Snowden?
Yes.
Mr. Barner?
Yes.
Thank you. And you're right, there is no vote after this, so. And we are, we will go into executive session.